To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, the liberty of the just
You had an update for us? Have you updated it since this weekend or last weekend?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll go back on.
It's actually got, the department pages are up, the new, well, I got you guys the project status report, do you want me to just start?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, status report as of, as late as today, I estimate that in general, the project is about seventy percent complete, which most of that has just been the last two months since this year. There's some definite reasons why seventy and not higher, and we'll go into that in just a little bit. But, um, so, the project is on track, meaning like, we're, we're making good progress, we're, we're not, there's not blockers stopping any one major thing. So, new and current content is being posted, so anything that's most recent, like this meeting and stuff, we're on a good iteration, and we get that up immediately as, from, between the website, YouTube or Facebook, we're posting there regularly as well. January twenty-fifth, uh, there was the workshop that went on to collect data, we collected a lot of data, pictures, gathered information, collected documents, and some of that we're still sifting through, so that's where some of that data is still yet to come. Uh, the site design updates are stable, with all the main pages still functional, there's no four oh fours, we're trying to make sure that each iteration is stable, doesn't, doesn't break things going forward. Uh, some pages are still empty, and that's where we're still implementing content as we acquire it. Uh, mobile continues to be stable as well, so every iteration that we're doing, we're validating that it works on both computer as well as mobile phone. So, current outstanding issues, uh, so, not everyone's picture has been taken, we still need Vern, I still need you, um, Mike, of course, he's, uh, you know, still away, and the judges as well, and if we're gonna have planning board and zoning board, if we want them represented with pictures, we should have that there as well. Uh, some people refuse to have their pictures, so, you know, the secretary, the assistant, and the town clerk, and that's perfectly fine, so when we see those not there, they're not there just, not because we didn't try, it's just because, I, I don't know if we want to put a placeholder, or just leave it blank, it looks good, just blank. So, need a point of contact, another issue that we're having is I need a point of contact or someone to champion getting to the court information, the zoning board information, the zoning board of appeals that is, and the planning board information, so, we're still very lacking there, we don't have, um, their meeting minutes, we don't have anything for them. Um, and I believe, I forget his name, but there was a gentleman I took a picture of that was here on the twenty-fifth.
Howard Newton?
Heavier set husky guy.
Howard Newton?
No, no, Howard, Howard's the thin, tall, lanky guy, no, this is a, this was a pretty big guy that was with Mike.
Old Vic maybe? Was it Vic?
He was asking about, he was asking about Howard's testing, or...
That had to be Vic, he's the chair of the planning board.
Okay, so I got a picture of him, but I don't have any of his information and stuff like that, so we need to still collect that. Uh, any, um, so Northeastern Computer, my company, is still working on digitizing some of the forms and supplemental information that we got, we have received a lot, and some of it is digitized good, uh, there's some merging of some non-digitalized forms that we're still working on, so that's still being done. There is continued design improvements that are being made, example is the public records. Now, um, last time I was here, we discussed how the format that we had it, the page would just go on forever, it would just be very lengthy. We now have what they call accordion, which basically is, if you look, you'll see the categories, and when you click on the categories, whether it be in mobile with your thumb or with a mouse, it drops down just that section, so you don't see list and list of information, you only see the section that you want.
Is that up and running yet?
That is. It's on there right now.
Just got it up and running this weekend, right?
Yes, that was, that was Sunday.
Are they on there too?
Yes, minutes are on there, uh, three agendas.
The categories up, so you didn't, nothing, you can click on now.
Right, that was, that was from last meeting, and now...
You said you've got the photos up, or no?
We have the photos of everyone but the town board, uh, just the town board, so Mike's picture's up for the highway department, your picture is up, Barb's picture's up, uh, Sam's picture's up, and Howard Newton's picture's up.
We got mine and Regis at one point.
Yes, I have yours and Regis, so the, the situation there is, last meeting, or for the last meeting, we redesigned the About Us, at one point in time, there was About Us, there was a sub-menu that had elected officials, but we didn't have enough content for all the different bullets underneath the About Us, so we just made it a solid About Us for history purposes. So, what I discussed that we're gonna do is add the town board as a department, I, I know it's not a department, but it's just gonna be, it's just underneath there, and you click that, and your pictures will show on the right-hand side, it'd be the, the four town board members. It, he's already underneath the supervisor, so he won't show up, of course, there, but the town board will show up on, underneath the town board, and then, on that page, we can discuss what the town board does, the importance of the town board, um, you know, the, the charter, what you guys do, and stuff like that, we can put some language in there, along with any links, or any important stuff that we wanna put underneath.
So, Sam's recreation stuff, that he's fussing out about right now, is that up?
Sam, yes, Sam's forms are up, the, there is...
The schedule?
What's that?
The schedule for the events this year?
The schedule for the events, I don't like soccer and volleyball. I don't have a sporting schedule, but I can get one.
And he said he gave everything to you. That was something you told us that you were gonna do about a month and a half ago, you get all Sam's stuff, and get it all up for the year of twenty twenty-three, so...
Yeah, the registration forms. Yep, the registration forms.
But, there should, the way I understood it, you were gonna put like, you know, in June, this registration will start, uh, for whatever, softball, you know what I mean, or whatever, that way, they're not getting it, you know, two weeks before they gotta apply for it, they got it right now, and then they can plan on doing what they gotta do, 'cause a lot of them, a lot of the problem that Sam runs into is that, if they don't have the problem here, before they can sign up, say with Ruh, and play on theirs, he has to release them, because it's a county thing, they, they have to at least apply in their own township first, so that was a nightmare for him, with a couple things going on, and uh, I just had that problem, I had a parent contact me, uh, for a kid that wanted to play basketball through, 'cause they didn't have, I don't know, for a team here, so, maybe if they got the stuff up faster, that's what I'm saying, people would know what we're offering here, and that way, we don't run into that stuff, you know what I mean? But that was something that...
Yes, we have the forms up, we have some content up, the one thing that is yet not, not working, or I haven't activated it, is the, uh, registration up on the top corner, and that's just because the database that keeps track of all that is being used, it's what houses all your guys' information as well, um, that, the website's using it, but there is some components on the bottom of the registration page that I created, that I'm still like, testing, still working out, I imagine I could have...
So, are you saying all the signup forms are up there right now?
The signup forms are underneath public records.
So, he's got all his events covered with signup forms right now?
The, the public records, yep, and then, one of the things we're working on is, while all of the stuff is in there...
Is it not under rec?
So, what we have right now is, the, when we post files, it goes underneath public record, that's where all the upload is.
Okay.
What we're doing is underneath departments, if you, if you go to the website, underneath public record, you see a category, and there's a category there called Recreation Department.
Okay.
That category is being tied with his department page.
So, it'll all come up eventually?
That, we were actually working on before we came here, there's a spot for links and spot for references, that is just gonna populate those forms on his page that are already on the public page, so there's some caveats and little twists that we're still working out. Uh, the hardest part, or the, the most time was spent this past weekend, working on the department pages, getting those formatted and looking the way we wanted and getting the information.
I think the garage phone number is wrong on there, you wanna check that out? You, I gave you a card a couple different times with all the phone numbers and the extensions and stuff, so I just double checked that garage up there, I think you hit the wrong phone number on it.
I found that somewhere, so I probably changed it to something wrong.
Is that the five six three three zero three nine?
The ZBA board and the planning board, nobody gave them the names of them all, they probably don't have photos, but at least if you can get all their names up there.
I, I don't have any names. No.
I could have pulled those right out of my folder. Before you leave, if you're gonna stay here, it could be a while, or getting, come down tomorrow one year, and I'll give them to you again, alright, like, those names should be posted by now.
Do you have, uh, contact numbers for them, that I could reach out to them, or?
I don't, I mean, for you, I mean, I can contact them, I, I would at least put the, think their names, don't you think their names should be up on the, as far as their categories, I don't know about their phone numbers, their phone number, their personal phone number, so I, I don't know, putting them up there, but...
Yeah, no, no, definitely, I'm not, I'm asking so I can reach out to get any information, or find out if they wanna get a picture up there, or, I was thinking that...
Yeah, that's when I gave you Kelsey's number for like, uh, ZBA board, and I gave you Sandy Rio's number for the, uh, planning board, because she'll have all of that stuff, I mean, I got them in there too, so, if you wanna stop by tomorrow, I'll get them for you, just don't publish those, because they're private phone numbers.
Right, understood.
Well, I can give you all the names.
The good news is, we can get it right up, as soon as we have the content, we can get it right up, and it's, it's already designed and formatted.
And the history page, it's still got that one blurt?
That one blurt, that's correct.
So...
So, Barb gave us some content, it is a, what we had requested was, um, some photos, uh, that were part of the content that she originally gave us.
I thought she gave that to you too, that's what she...
She gave us a digital, she did give me some content, she emailed it to me, but what she gave us is the, is a, a, a doc, word document of the content, so it's not the original, it's not the photos, so we can, we can highlight them and cut out the picture, but the quality will be less, it may not be any issue whatsoever, and we can get that up very, very quickly, very immediately. Uh, but, we, we were told that we could get the original photos, if we have those, that would, that's the ideal solution, that's all.
Yeah, that would be a Barb thing, if she can get the original photos.
I had one other question too, which was, there is a newer town comp plan besides for two thousand and two, right, that's the old one, right, the two thousand and two?
I believe that comp plan goes to two thousand... Is it forty? It's a twenty-year plan.
I guess two thousand and two.
Yeah, I think it goes to like, two thousand.
So, but there is a new one, 'cause, so the comp plan that I have a PDF of is two thousand and two.
No, because they, they redid that comp plan in maybe oh nine?
So, that should be when they had some... Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's kinda old-looking.
No, we've got a new one, and I was, that was, one thing I just got done about a couple months ago, was a digital copy of that, matter of fact, Barb helped me with that one, 'cause we had to contact the college, 'cause, uh, SUNY College actually did a lot of that, and put the program together after the committee worked on it, and we didn't have, wanted a hard copy, so we didn't have a digital copy, but I believe that Barb now has a digital copy of that, matter of fact, I'm a hundred percent sure that she does, because I needed it for a couple of the grants, like CDBG and...
I have a thumb drive I gotta return, and she's in office I believe tomorrow, right, from ten to two or something.
She's at Oates every day.
Right. I can, uh, come, I got to drop off her USB stick anyways, I will come and, maybe she'll refill it for me, with the comp plan, with the...
No, we're just getting towards the end of the month, and that's what we said we'd give you, so I did, I didn't wanna pull any punches, I just wanted to let you know, this is, some of the stuff I know is quick on it, and it's been a couple, since things have been updated, so I will go on, today I was swamped with all this, so I did not go on that website.
I will, uh, I, will be back if, if you still, will have me, uh, on the twenty-eighth, and any other concerns, and I can give another brief update from this project status till next week, and that way, um, have you been writing down?
Yeah, I have been writing down, I know what to do.
So, um, yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, get the, the few points that you made with the content, and, uh, we'll come back on the twenty-eighth and revisit.
Yeah, I'll come and see you tomorrow when you get here, and that way, I can get to that other stuff that you...
So, Pat, you say you're at about seventy percent right now?
Yes.
When do you think you'll be at a hundred percent?
I would say ninety-five percent. Okay, so, the, so the design is, is solid, it, it's there now, it's stable, it all is determined on how long it takes us to get the content. Now, there's content that we have, so the content that we have...
It's a bit there you got.
Yes, oh yes, and, uh, I, we're over half through that content, so I would say fifteen percent of that is probably about a week out. The remaining fifteen percent is, you know, i- if, if you, if the court says we don't want our pictures, the justices don't want their pictures, if the, uh, if, if Mike, or you don't want your picture on there...
I'll do it right now if you want, I don't care, make it easier for you.
Um, could do that, or could, are you local, can I come in, when I come in tomorrow, you wanna?
I'll be working.
Oh, okay.
You can take out the American flag.
Right, I can, I can do that against the wall, perfect.
What are you on?
With my cellphone, even, 'cause that's good. Uh, so, getting, if we're, if, if it's stuff like that, that if we don't have it, we're still good, and if, if we don't want it, then, then we're fine, we can say that fifteen percent will be real quick. If it's, i- if it's, we're not getting the content, just whatever remaining content there is, like, um, I think I still need information about the dog control officer, for instance, and stuff like that, or the zoning board, or planning board, sounds like it's gonna be quick, 'cause it sounds like they'll, they'll get me everything I need, it shouldn't be long at all, I mean, we're talking like, a couple weeks.
We gave it to the end of February to get things completed, you know what I'm saying? And, it's been a, it's been a year, and I'm sick of one, of getting pounded by this, you know my feelings on that already, and that's why I said, you gave me, it's a short month, twenty-eight days this month, but unfortunately, that's what we did, we gave it to February.
Yep.
So, I wanna see, personally, I wanna see that it's pretty close to done by the end of February.
Yeah, if you want, we can, um, schedule a, a review, a, a day where we can review it, that way, all your expectations are being met, and if you wanna work it out with the board of anything that there is not, you know, give us, you have that by Friday, that way we can get all the expectations done.
I mean, I'm gonna guess that the history, the history page alone is gonna take you some time to put all the pictures up, and the rest of the history stuff that she's got, so, not alone is, she's been waiting for that for I don't know how many months, she's been hammering me on that, Sam was beside himself when he talked to me last week, like this had done. It can take quite a bit, but I'm getting to the end of my rope, just so you're aware.
Yeah?
So, alright, any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
So, I'll see you tomorrow, and I'll get you whatever you think you need left.
Okay.
And, uh, that way we can hopefully get this thing together and get, get a website that everybody can use, okay?
Sounds good, thank you.
Appreciate it, I appreciate you both being here tonight, and I appreciate the updates. You need to get it done. You need to get it done.
Yes.
Hey, thanks for coming in, and I appreciate it.
Do a picture now?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay.
And what do we want to do?
I have to say that, just if you wanna stand up and...
Cradle the American tribe, cotta.
Um, you can, and now just a little bit so I don't get that, perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you, Vern.
So, um, that does the website, now as for IT, uh, IT, they are done, so they gave me a thirty-day notice, um, which only puts us to the end of March, to find out an IT company. Uh, basically, they had some irreconcilable differences with Pat, so they decided they're bowing up. Um, I'm not real happy about that, I talked to Lisa, uh, they're definitely done, um, I have to go through and find out, we're talk, talking with a few other towns on who they use for IT, there's a couple more on the, the website that they gave us, uh, that may, may be useful to us, but she goes, you need a MS IT person, somebody that actually can come in and work on stuff, not just do the electronic stuff, so, that's gonna be, um, something that we're gonna need to hire somebody else by the end of March. We got the twenty-eighth, the meeting on the twenty-eighth, and then we'll have the March meeting, so, don't give us a lot of time, but we can't go without an IT group. That's another one we gotta work on. As far as the Morsel Water Project, uh, there are many things happening, I'm gonna read a lot of this, because I didn't wanna forget anything, and there's a ton of stuff going on, okay, 'cause everything's actually coming, parts are starting to work. So, again, there are many, many things that are happening at a fast pace for the Morsel Water Project, we have several resolutions to pass on February twenty-eighth, which isn't very far away. Resolution to update, uh, La Burge Group contract for engineering, this is required by USDARD, they must use the contract content that was provided by Lucas Manning at USDARD. This new contract has been sent to USDARD for approval, so basically, we've been operating under the old contract, which is not, uh, acceptable for the USDARD, 'cause once you move into the project and you're just gonna start it, they want the contract with the engineer under their terminology, so La Burge did a whole new contract, um, sent it to USDARD, Lucas sent it up the chain to his bosses, they're reviewing it, their lawyers are reviewing it, make sure that all their bullet points are taken care of, and then hopefully, we can sign that on the twenty-eighth, but, like I said, it's at review at USDARD right now. File mapping is, uh, being prepared by La Burge Group, the flyover data is almost completed, so they had a couple good days when we lost all the snow, that they could actually get the LIDAR done, um, so that he's got enough to start the file mapping, um, process, uh, we're gonna need one more flyover, maybe two, uh, to get the rest of what they, they need. The good thing is, you don't pay for it, each time they get up in the air, you only pay for it once, so that was my worry, 'cause I was like, if we're gonna get charged every time they put a plane up there to try to hit these spots, it might as well wake up next, you know what I mean? But he goes, no, he goes, they're gonna try to, to fly a couple more, uh, final flights, just get the, uh, final details in there, but he's got, he's got like eighty percent right now, I go, this is about twenty percent, there was too much snow in the woods to get the proper LIDAR, so, they're working, they're gonna work, uh, on that while he's working on the final mapping. And again, that's needed for Clinton County Health Department, before we can submit the plan over there, the final engineering plan, 'cause Clinton County Health Department has approved the, um, water project in a whole. This was a long conversation, sorry. I spoke into Ben Siding, and I, um, we also need to get a firm hired to represent us as a financial advisor, I've reached out to, uh, Munistat, they are one of the three large, uh, financial institution advisors that work on large, uh, projects like this water project, so there's only three of them that you could choose from. They will handle all the financial documentation for this project, the grant monies in the band will be needed to fund the project each year, the expected first band will be from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four, the second band will run until the expected end of the project completion in two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. There will be a lot of legal documents and regulations that need to be completed on the grants, and eventual USDARD low-interest loan for the thirty-eight years that we have secured. To keep the flow of monies needed during construction, a band is taken out each year for the amount of, uh, projected spending, the band is then paid back with interest by the grant money that were secured. Our first band will be no more than three point five million dollars, the interest, and that's projected right now by, uh, La Burge, the interest is expected to be around sixty thousand for that, that year, if we take the three point five million, if the percentage rate stays about three percent as it is now, and that's what the bands are going for, so, basically, the band is a, is a, the bank in intro, because like, CDBG, they can drop us their one point two five million right off the bat, but, the congressional funding, that's a two million five hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, they haven't even figured out what alphabet agency is going to administer that federal funds down to the town, so it could be ORC, it could be CDBG, it could be USDA, or it could be, it could even be DEC, so, until they figure out who's gonna actually administer the funds down, that could take another eight months or so, so, um, in the meantime, you need an operating expenditure budget, and that's, that's how these big projects work, you take out a band, it's not a bond, it's a band, so I learned a lot over the last couple days. Um, that is another reason that we need to move now to lock in this at a lower rate, 'cause it's about three percent the bands right now, three to four percent, and the way the feds are, um, raising the prime lending rate, or the prime interest rate, the better the, that we lock it in, is the better for the project, it would be less, there, the monies are still in the, in the project, so this is not extra, it's all already in there, uh, it's just the process of going about how we get a shovel on the ground. After the close of the first year's band, we will close it out, and take out a second band to complete the project. When that second year is completed, we will then have a closing on the USDARD loan, now, in order to get what we always call the bond, okay, that's actually a low-interest loan, uh, you have to be seventy-five percent complete with the project, and that's when they have a closing. So, the final amount of the band will be closed, the financial advisor will then stay on until the final closing with USDARD to complete the process, the cost for his services the first year is estimated to be three thousand eight hundred dollars, the industry standard is about one thousand dollars per one man, so, turn it to two point eight, two point five, somewhere around there, he's looking at thirty-eight, hundred dollars, thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, to administer all that financial work for that year. He also stated that he would hold his price for the life of the project, no increases in the years twenty-four into twenty-five, so basically, if we do another twenty-five hun, or two million fi, two point five million, that second year, or three million, maybe three thousand or two thousand five hundred or whatever we, we borrow, it's always, like I say, a thousand dollars per man.
Amazing, one percent.
Yeah, yeah, that's all it is, so, I say it's all it is, but I don't wanna do it, that's what they get paid to do, and that makes sure that all the legal stuff is taken care of, because we're obligated for a whole bunch of financing legalities, and that's what these guys do, so that's why you hire them. So that's why you hire them. Um, I will have a completed contract for the resolution prior to the February twenty-eighth meeting. Again, we will want to lock in this price, uh, and before the new industry standard price increases. Finally, we have reached out to, um, all the Rock family landowners to reach an agreement for the new proposed twelve inch main, uh, through the property. We will be completing a walkthrough on that property sometime next week. This is intended to reach an agreement with the landowners on the new route of the main, uh, from the water tower to the Flat Rock Road. So I'll give you guys a copy of this. This is a letter that I sent out to them. And Kevin Block already reached out to me. So anyways, there's, uh, they're all listed there. There's six family members that's in the trust, so we'll have to get signed off by all of them. That's the two that are local, that are willing to spearhead the, the thing and work with us to try to reach an agreement of where that water line will go to. So if you look at that map on the back page, you'll see where the new proposed water line cuts the diagonal from water tower right over to the Flat Rock Road as high as we could get it without losing head pressure. That was one of the things that, um, Kevin, Mr. Rock asked me. He goes, um, that's a hundred year old forest there. He goes, um, I'm really, I'd rather not cut any trees down in there, but he goes, there is a wood road that goes through there. He goes, it might not be as straight a line as what the engineer drew on here, but he's thinks he's willing, we can reach an agreement and be willing to allow that water line to go following that, that wood road that he's got through here there, so we don't have to take out a bunch more trees. I told him also that we would abandon the old eight inch main that goes through the whole property, but that, uh, was a, a, a good trade-off because it's a, that opens up a lot of that property, but he goes, some of that sweatland's back there, so we can't really use it anyway. Again, we'll be run, we'll be coming down, we'll do a walkthrough, we'll have one of the surveyors there, um, to see whether that, the route that he'd like us to go still works with engineering to keep the head pressure headed downhill.
Now, where's this eight inch run, do you know?
That eight inches right there is.
To the Beaver Dade.
Goes right through there.
Yeah.
And basically, it, it follows the old Riley Brook, but nobody knows exactly where it is. I know Donald, before he passed away, went up there with Mike Gagnon, and they took a flat bow out in that field where the pond is, and they still couldn't locate it.
We looked for that, that water line when I was on the down board.
So the, the, there is the problem. I mean, you don't want this, if we're gonna put a new twelve inch main, and we want it somewhere where we can maintain it along the shoulder of the road, you know, in the right of way of the road.
Well, didn't you just say we are gonna be responsible of remove that?
No.
Oh, I thought you said we were.
We're gonna abandon it.
Oh, okay. I thought you said we were removing it.
No, no.
I was gonna say, if we don't know where it is, how are we removing it?
No, there's even, I've even, from a couple of the, the people, the older timers around said that some of it goes right underneath the brook, because they figured that, well, the water don't freeze, so it'll stop the line from freezing, so they put it underneath there.
Some of that line goes underneath the brook.
Yeah.
That we know.
So again, um, it's kind of a nightmare the way it is right now, and there's no way to maintain it or know if it's leaking, and there's been many, uh, theories that we're losing quite a bit of water already with that pond that's up there that was never there before. So, um, this, like I say, is a big part of the project. It looks like they're willing to work with us, which is a good thing, and, uh, I'll keep you updated on how the, the walkthrough of the land works, and then after Ron gets his, direction, see if it works with the engineering.
I wonder where he's supposed to get that?
Well, that, we're gonna, I'm trying to do a walkthrough either on Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
With LaBerge?
With, yep, yep. Yeah, it doesn't do me any good to walk with the property owner, only to see a layout of the land, but I really need the engineer to tell me whether or not we can use that wood road.
Twenty-eight points out where you gotta go, either it's gonna work or it's not gonna work.
Yeah, exactly. So then we'll, we'll be back.
I don't believe there's a road down through there.
Huh?
I don't think there's a road down through there where you can go. I cut the wood in there years ago, and I don't remember. The only road in was off from Sofa Street. Little narrow road, had to squeeze by a big pine tree with trucks, and I don't remember a road, what you're talking about.
Nah. I'm just going by Kevin Sidin. He goes, yeah, he goes, we have some wood roads through there, and he goes, I'd like to stay on those if I can, so we don't cut any more trees.
Small plantation in there.
Yeah, he said some of that forest is over a hundred years old.
Yeah, over behind Macy's and stuff.
He goes, it's, uh, some pretty tall pines and stuff in there.
Wasn't nice wood.
He goes, I'd rather not destroy if we didn't have to. So it's, it's a working process. And the good thing is they're willing to work with us right now, and we'll see how it all goes. Final notes and touches are being completed on the Rixton Ave, uh, project between LaBerge Group and Clinton County Health Department. We should have a, uh, county approved set of map and plan shortly. This will allow us to place out a, uh, to bid the needed contract for material. I will be contacting Mr. Trump Lee to see when he can schedule his work. And again, that's gonna be, the start of that project will kind of depend on, uh, when he's gonna open in this summer on his, on his schedule. I think he said he was booked for June anyway, so, um, this is the mapping. These are the last few bullet points that they were going back and forth with, uh, Clinton County Health Department and LaBerge to, to clean up the rest before they signed it. Basically, we got, they didn't have any problems with this. Most of it was, again, like, where their septic's were. Finally got that to make sure they weren't in the, the planned out area of, of, uh, the loop. This is basically the plan, so if you want, I can make you guys copy to this, if you want, so we can look at them. The only thing I noticed right off the bat was the hydrants didn't have a loophole or a way to flain, and if it's up here in this weather, you can't use those hydrants. We're not California, no freezing in there, so I wanna make sure that those are changed over to the ones that drain out after you close them. Other than that, everything else looks pretty good as far as I was looking at, but I'm gonna go over this again with, uh, Ron. What I can do after we get, uh, final approval from the county health department is I can even have him come down and go over this later.
We know when Ron comes up.
Okay. Well, he should be here Wednesday or Thursday, because that's the two days that he said he had open and scheduled, and that's what our, um, email Mr. Rock back, and that's what we could do. At least that's going. We're gonna take so much time. Okay, uh, I've also received, uh, the maps and plans that are now at the Clinton County Health Department for Macy Lane Water. These, uh, this process is moving forward, and we should have approval shortly on, on this one also. When this final approval is given, we will then put out to bids for material and work to be performed on that project. After bids are approved, we can start that, the, the project. It's projected sometime the end of May or the middle of June, as of far for Macy Lane. And I got your updates on that. This is the one that I signed that, that sent over to, um, Clinton County Health Department. Basically, the, the same application that I signed for the Rixton Ave one, except for with Macy Lane information on it. You'll see the, the mapping that's on there. I got the big map right here if you wanna look at it, because it's kinda hard to see. One by seven. We're making headway on this one too. We need the same stake on this one too with the hydrants when I look down. So these will have to be converted over. This is basically all the spec sheet of what they're putting in. It'll be, the fourth main will be replaced with that eight inch main there, and then in the back cul-de-sac, we're also gonna close that loop, because that's an open loop that goes around this way. So they included in this loop right here, which will close that.
That's what that runoff is?
Yeah, that's about, I think, I don't wanna say. I think it's about six hundred feet, but don't quote me, um, for that, that area right there. So that'll be a complete loop. It'll be looped back in.
So they're tying into what's already there?
Yeah, that in the back is gonna stay, other than this right here, because that's all, um, six inch high pressure PVC that was put in not that long ago, so that's good. Everything from this point on is the brand new eight inch that they paid to have installed, about eleven years ago now, so that's good.
So this isn't, the, this here is not the, uh, Irish Solomon Road?
No, this will be the, the.
No, but I'm saying the starting point.
No, it'll, because that comes in right to the beginning of the development, you know where those apartment houses are on the right hand side? And then, uh, you'll see a hydrant there on the right hand side on the end. So we'll be tying into that and then going from there to the back cul-de-sac.
So from the main run two there is already eight inch?
Yes, that's all eight inch, and that's what they paid for originally.
Okay.
When they, uh.
And we know that. Yeah, okay.
Well, it's on paper as eight inch. Now, uh, Tower Plaster said that is eight inch, so they're good there. But yeah, I mean, this one originally in the middle, when Gerrell started this, was supposed to be six, and they penciled it out and put four, and that's what they ended up in there. Nobody can tell me whether it's galvanized or what it is, so if it's galvanized, it's gonna be a four inch, it might be.
Hack it originally did that.
Yeah. So anyways, that will complete that whole water, uh, district, and it'll all be pretty much updated to, to new. Before that will resolve the rest of the issues over there. This is just into the elevation. That, that shows you a better, better show of the pipe, where they tie into the eight inch, maybe doing this section here, and that's the eight inch that'll go over that six and finish that six inch cul-de-sac in the back. Plus, they're, they're gonna have hydrants all the way down through there now, so that'll help their ISO rating, it'll help their insurance too, um, and it'll help the fire department see first brush.
Are you already contacting them on a higher, changing higher concern?
I did. I hit Ron and that.
Somebody say about it?
He goes, yep. He goes, I'll take care of it. And he said, you'll, you'll have the updated drawings, and, um, it really isn't gonna change anything with the Department of Health, Clinton County Department of Health, um, what type hydrant we use in there. They just wanna see, you know, like I said, uh, overall mapping, what we're doing. The hydrant sizes aren't gonna change. They'll just be the ones that drain out after we shut them off rather than put those up. These, the only way you can do it up here, you can still install these, but you'd have to go around, and that means the Towne Plaster, because they, they do the operations right in the time. They would actually have to go up there with like a small pool pump, pump each one of those hydrants out before it falls, but then you're gonna run into the same issue if you use them anymore.
It's like you use them, you're gonna be.
Which I said, they're gonna forget, or somebody's gonna forget, so, you know. Don't, don't put the plug in, the drain hole, and make sure that they're drainable. So they'll put enough gravel underneath them to do it. That's the way all the other ones are, the rest of the issues. I also contacted Barton with Judas, that's who we hired to do the engineering on the garage floor up there. Uh, they're gonna start the rebidding process and update the plans and mapping as we already replaced the front sections of the bays and the aprons to the garage doors last fall, because,
Lawyer.
Lawyer, thank you. I kept wanting to say Laisway.
Did they seal it? Not, I don't wanna cut in here, but did they seal that after because of the salt?
The, the concrete?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe the concrete was.
I was just wondering, you know.
But what I'd, I'd like to see after they complete the project is maybe epoxy put down there.
Yeah, something to save it.
Before, like you say, it's not even, it's not even a, the salt, uh, it will eat the cement, but the oil, once it gets in there, you can't epoxy the floor after to save the concrete.
Right, I was just wondering.
Without shaving it down and getting kind of good cement again, because we went through that at the fire station. They had to put a diamond cutter in there and cut it down like an inch and a half to actually do the, the floor finish and epoxy that. They, they didn't epoxy that and seal it. I agree with you, the sealer is better, because we've used epoxy down there, and every time the truck's out there for any of the time, the tires peel it right up when it went to go away. You don't, you don't get that with the sealer. We've never had that problem. It saves a bit more money than that probably thing, but it wouldn't be a bad idea. All right, uh, they are also going to add a, add in projected cost for a water oil separator system. I said, we transferred the two hundred thousand over already that we had built in the unallocated fund reserves. So I said, you know what? We already did some of this work. I know this is gonna be an inexpensive, um, you know, operation to put that oil-water separator in, because I know what the cost is over there, but, uh, it's only a matter of time till we get hit on that for DEC, so we might as well get a price on it and see if we can't include it. We'll see how bad the bids are this time. Hopefully, they're not three times more than what they got.
Well, that's the big thing right there, and only that. We gotta hope somebody bends it. You've been through that route too.
I know that some of the smaller contractors had said that they, uh, would definitely bid on it, so that, that's a, that's a big plus, because when you get like Murnane and those guys, they want big projects, so it's hard for them to bid on the small ones. They're gonna bid pretty high. It's certainly, it's up their time. So again, please look that, uh, please look at the attached, uh, estimate says, will be there on a, it'll be on the February twenty-eighth meeting, and I'll have over that. I'll get those guys out, put them in their boxes if I didn't already, uh, just so we have it. I know I did. I know I did. Matter of fact, let me see here, I'll give you two years now for the hook arrest for the ones that are on here. So they, they kill us with it, but, um, basically, you look at, I guess it'd be page two, I don't even know how much pages, you're looking at about four grand to have Barton with Judas, uh, do the updates with the oil sep, oil-water separator and, uh, do the new rebidding process. It wasn't terrible, um, and it's a necessity. They'll go through, they'll rank all the bids after, hopefully we get more than one. And, uh, the biggest part of that was the engineering to tie it into our, um, new floor drains that we had in the project now.
I'm glad I actually go on the south side.
I am gonna guess that it's gonna have to go in the back of the, saw box roof, that, that area of the floor, because you're gonna have all your drains up front, plus you're gonna have your crash drain going the other way for that area of the roof line. And it depends on what way we decide to do it, and I talked to, you know, Barton with Judas about that. There's a couple ways that we can do it. We can do it so that it goes into the oil-water separator, which holds, you know, roughly about fifteen hundred gallons anyways, and then you put an external, uh, two thousand gallon tank outside just for the water, and then you would have to have somebody come in and pump that water out every time it's full, okay? Uh, the other way that you can do it is to put in, I think it's, don't quote me, but I think it's three filtration pumps that are like sand filters for a pool, and then you backflush those after it goes through the, backflush them as needed, and it's required at least monthly, and you have to keep, uh, log book on that. DEC will then come in once a year and audit that log book to make sure that. DEC will then come in once a year and audit that log book to make sure that they are being backflushed. And make sure that, you know, the, the, pretty event of maintenance is being done. And then it goes from there out to a leach field, just a leach field. And then as long as you don't have any problems with leach field, it's good for whatever it is, maybe 25, 30 years or whatever, before you have to add maybe another couple of leach lines to it. That, even though the system's a little bit more expensive because of the filtration, it's less expensive to operate throughout the year. I could tell you, the fire station, I bet you they pump that one at least six times a year. And like I said, every time you come in with those plows, and they're melting all that snow off, all that water goes into the floor drain. So it's going to fill the, the tank up, you know? If they hold them on.
What do they do with the water?
They usually get a, you can get a rotor router, or you can get Donnie Rado, or one of those guys that do the pump outs for the sec tanks. That's what they come in with, and they just suck them out. They bring them down to the city. And they dump it down there, and you pay for whatever they charge you per load. Four, 500 bucks, 400 something bucks.
It might be more money, but it's filtration systems in it, but it sounds like in the long run, it's going to be a cheaper route and a better system.
So the, the, the only catch to that, and the reason the commissioners over there went with the pump out system is that there is no DEC regulation. Because as long the pump was, as long the tank is full, then you have, the liability is on Holler to pump it and then show the records that he dumped it in that sanitation station. So if we do the filtration system, then again, there is a log book. You have to make sure, I think it's at least once a month, I have to look up on it again, it's been about six years since we looked at that system over there. But I think it was at least once a month, and you have to log it, and you have to say that it was back, back flushed, plus there's a checkoff list that we do. So they didn't want to take the chance that it got missed a month, because DEC can't find you.
Well, we shouldn't have to worry about that. We have a, we have a.
Paid employees, not volunteers.
You hand that to Mr. Snyder, since he is the head, and say this will be done. Now, they wouldn't have had a place for leach field over here anyways.
Yeah, they could have did it in the back, just off the back. Because it really doesn't require, I think it was three 50-foot lines that they needed.
But would they have been far enough away from the river?
No, they got the other septic system in there. It's a good question.
Yeah.
You know, when they purchased that land on the right-hand side, I gave them enough room over there that they would get septic over there in case they were going to put leach fields across the back. Don't quote me, but I, I guess, if I was guessing, that's probably 45 feet maybe to the fence. And then you got probably 15 feet of gravel and jod土 there to the river.
Is, is that a oil separator two there?
Yeah, the oil separators on the inside.
Yeah.